Lucky you have a wife to support you. That's what you're lucky about.
That's what I tell her every day, Karma.
And Karma, you have like a tropical forest behind you.
Yes, that's quite a plant that. It's taller than me.
Nice.
It's first, I don't know what it's called. It has a name, but it's a, it was a shoot. It was brought home a stick from Expo sixty-seven.
Marijuana.
You wish. This isn't the original plant, but the original plant died. But before it died, my dad took some more clippings of it. And then we grew this. I can't keep it. It's the only place in the house that'll fit.
Are you ready, Jamie?
Ready to go, yeah. Everyone and welcome to members of council, staff and anyone watching on Facebook like to call the meeting to order. Are there any decorations of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing not, seeing none, except the agenda of a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Councilor Massey. That the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda of the regular meeting of council on Monday, January tenth, twenty twenty-two. Are there any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Adoption of the previous minutes, I have a motion moved by Councilor Massey, seconded by Councilor Noble. That the minutes of the following meetings be adopted as circulated special meeting of council December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Regular meeting of council December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Are no delegations moving on to staff reports administrative department verbal update?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to provide a quick verbal update on the latest on COVID nineteen. As it pertains to the township of North Glengarry. So as council is aware. We have closed our arena as well as our dome as per the provincial guideline. We've also closed the main office here to the public, but we want to make it very clear to everyone that if you do have business to be done at the main office. Certainly you can give staff a phone call or an email and make an appointment. I know I do come in the office every day as well as Minick. And other staff are working from home, but they can come in to serve the public if necessary. And I do hear people coming and they'll knock on the door and Minick does serve them as well as people coming in to do business. Also, there are some planning and building staff in the premises as well. If there's anything that people want to look at permits. If they do want that personal touch, they can come in the office. However, we do encourage people to do as much as they can on the phone. And via email as well. We have done some extra cleaning here at the office as well as other other facilities. And the fire stations as well as the public works garages. Because unfortunately, not all of our staff are able to work from home. We do have essential services such as the fire department, water, roads. Being that it's winter. And we've also done some, have the option of people if they want to do some rapid testing. For the essential services and we've ruled that out as well. We're keeping track of any COVID nineteen exposures. As well as any staff that are have tested positive. We do have a couple of staff that are. However, it was over the holiday and they're working from home. So we're managing that quite well. And certainly senior management team as well as myself and some of the other managers are in constant communication. To make sure that, that you know, the number one message to staff is that they socially distance, wash their hands, wear their masks. And if they're sick to stay home. So that's, that's the key messages that we're encouraging all of our staff as well as our residents to. To stay with. So certainly if I have any, if council has any questions, I can answer them, but that's sort of where we are right now with COVID nineteen.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from members of council? Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sarah, I know that essential services, well, across the provinces. There's been some, some concern that, you know, everyone might start going down at once. And that not be able to provide those services. Is there any indication of a threat of that here in North Glengarry?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. So with our new Public Works Director, Tim Wright, we've had those conversations, those key conversations. In water, we've gone to a teams system. So I mean, also ask them to separate so that they're not connected with each other. That there will be no workplace outbreak in the Waterworks Department. We have been in a conversation as well with Glengarry. Just, you know, thinking that we maybe have to share some staff. But we're looking at in that department, we're in pretty good state right now. The same with the garages. So we're asking them to not congregate, to be in their own trucks. And we're also doing an extra cleaning as well. So being that certainly Tim is monitoring any staff that have symptoms or are off. We're also doing it corporately, just so we have a better idea. So currently not an issue karma, but certainly we have. You know, availability of staff from the, from even from the county perhaps with the roads department. If we ran into a situation that we were down in staff. I'm hoping that we don't run into it, you know, overnight. So far, you know, with the Christmas holidays, that was the concern. We haven't seen that sort of wave come through quite yet. Certainly from the Christmas break. As far as Christmas Day and Boxing Day, that seems to have, we've gotten through okay with that. It'll just be the New Year's. And then anything else going forward. So certainly number one thing is education with staff. And, and keeping track of who's off and who's not, but so far so good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. Thanks for your report, sir. Moving on to Community Services Department Award of Contract for the Glengarry Sports Palace refurbishment. I have a motion moved by Councilor Madden, seconded by Councilor Manley. That the council receives a staff report number CS twenty twenty-two zero-one and that council approves the award of the contract. For the Glengarry Sports Palace refurbishment, the Free Con Construction Limited in the amount of three million five hundred and ninety-three dollars plus HST. The council approved that the project be funded through a combination of the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program. Community Culture and Recreation Stream Grant Funding Transfers from Reserves and Debt. And that the major, the mayor and chief administrative officer are hereby authorized to execute the documentation relevant to this project. Welcome in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As council will recall, this is a long-going project. We initially approached council back in two thousand and nineteen. Try to grant to ICIP for funding to help with the refurbishment of the Glengarry Sports Palace. We were advised in April that we had received the grant and we then proceeded to. The engineering phase of the project and then the tendering phase. The numbers that came back are indeed a lot higher than we had expected. We knew that we would have some impact due to COVID. And we also knew that the numbers might be higher due to the additional components that we had added to the project. That said, we worked, staff worked with the CAO as well as with the treasurer to present a financing breakdown. That gave different options, either awarding the contract in full or option two, three, four and five. Which would take away some of the different components without jeopardizing the grant as it stands today. So we're actually bringing this recommendation to council following submissions that were received on the tender. We did indeed receive four submissions. Two of those did not qualify. One of the submissions did not acknowledge the addenda in the RFT. And the other one did not submit the cost breakdowns. So we were left with two submissions which were free con as well as grant Marion. And as you could see, both of these are very close in pricing, but our tender does dictate us to award to the lowest tender. Which in this case would be Free Con Construction Limited. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. This is somewhat disturbing considering the amount of money that we had budget for. And secondly, that's disturbing is the fact that two companies bid it at almost exactly the same cost. Which tends to make me think that that is what the true cost will be. So I've looked through the, I've looked through the options and unfortunately, none of them really seem palatable to me. You know, I think that we may have to, this is again, just my opinion that we may have to re-tender this project. We're lucky that we do have Maxville that is still open and can, you know, should we not get this done in time? But I really think that we should re-tender with, with the, with everything separated out. So that we can make a decision based on. Just basically, you know, if we have to go with just what we need, then that's what we need to go with. So anyways, I'm looking for council's recommendation on this, Councilman Manley.
Yeah, I have to agree with you, Mr. Mayor. I, I really, I mean, we went from a, a two point one million dollar project. To a three point seven million dollar project. And it's just, and unfortunately, the municipality is going to pick up the shortfall of that. And be paying it off for, for twenty-five years if we went through a loan process or whatever. I, yeah, I really think that we have to relook at this somehow. And whether we go back to, back to the province and the feds. And explain our situation again to them. I think that maybe we could. Who knows? I mean, I, I think we have to explore those options in order to make, make this reasonable for, for our taxpayers or whatever. Thank you.
Yeah, I definitely think that we should be tapping our local MP and our local MPP to work on our behalf. If anybody thinks that the pricing that was, you know, that we did about a year ago or a year and a half ago is the same today. You know, they're sadly mistaken. And unfortunately, it's not like we can say, let's hold off until, until the pricing comes down. It's not an option. I mean, we've already started to rip up some things. So it's, yeah, we're gonna move forward. So Council, when think you had your hand up and then count Deputy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree as well. I think we need to take a little more time to look at the costs, break down the costs. And see if we can tend to the project again. So I'm glad that we're going to give it a little more time.
Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I agree with your point. You know, chances are prices aren't going to go down anytime soon. However, the, when you take into the contingency numbers that were used up out of the original budget. And then combine it with the, the increased costs. This project cost is actually doubled. And so, you know, I really think we need, we need to. Taxpayers certainly would be expecting that. And I think it's unfair for us to expect them to absorb that, that cost in debt over time. So breaking it up, I think is a good idea. Who knows? Maybe, maybe other funding will be forthcoming. A provincial election is on the horizon. And, and I think if we think creatively about this. And strategically that, you know, maybe we can make this a little more affordable for the, for the taxpayer. And meanwhile. You may, you know, make sure that this project goes forward because we need, we need to make sure it gets, gets completed. You know, as soon as possible under the circumstances. The other, the other thing I just wanted to mention is. I, I think council is going to need their eyes in a little more detail on this project going forward. When it comes to how those pieces are broken out and the associated budget figures that go with those pieces. Because my, this is just my personal opinion, I'd like to see us work with the original numbers that were allotted in this project. Because that's what, you know, our rate pairs are expecting was, were expecting, which was a two point one million dollar project. We know that we can, we can spend those dollars without question. And, you know, so maybe if we look at the first phase. Hopefully, the, the most critical infrastructure will fit within that two point one million dollar. Parcel. And, and we can get going on getting this facility back up and running. Even if we don't end up getting it all done at once. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Am I the only one that's freezing up? Is everyone else freezing up? It was me?
Yeah.
Just you.
One second, please.
Do you want, Mr. Mayor, shall I repeat myself? That was a joke. He's frozen.
I'm back and I can hear you. And my answer to your question is please no.
So then can I ask a question?
Yes, just, yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hogan. And sorry that we're ripping apart your project. So I have two questions for you. From what I remember seeing, the boards are off, the glasses off, the seats are out. So obviously, that's done. But what does the grant allow us to cut out? And what needs to be done? Obviously, everything should be done, but what needs to be done? And do we have to start over? Can you just cut out some stuff? Or do we have to start from scratch, so to speak?
So thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. The options that we had presented council were the options that we thought would not impact the grant. If we're going back to the drawing board, we're going to really take into consideration everything that had to do with accessibility. As well as energy efficiency and make sure that we're concentrating on those. So we will do everything we can to ensure that those components comply a hundred percent of the grant.
Okay, and the big, sorry, to follow, the biggest thing was that the slab was needed to be replaced. That's the genesis of the project. Okay, so that has to be done no matter what.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah. Picture's frozen, but we can hear you.
Was it, is it frozen in a good, do I look good?
There you go. Now we can see it. You got your hands moving there. Good.
It wasn't, to be honest, it wasn't your best side.
It wasn't a good look.
Thank you. Well then. Okay, so just to comment a little bit on what Council Noble was saying. I think that we are going to go back to the province anyways and the province and the feds and discuss the use of that, of those monies. So I think it, by, you know, defeating this motion and passing another motion. I think it gives us the opportunity to go back to the province and feds and negotiate with them. And I think we need to understand that, you know, the money they've given us is just, it's not suitable for the project. So for us to move forward, we either need more money or we need the latitude to change the parameters of the project. So I think that's something that we're gonna have to look at over the next month. I think that's possible, Anne.
Definitely.
Okay. Further questions or comments from members of council? Council Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to clarify, the accessibility and the energy efficiency were part and parcel of this grant, right? Like that was, that was a big aspect of this that we had to, had to make sure was included, right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. Those were the components on which the whole grant was built. So we were looking at accessibility for the spectator stands as well as the bathroom areas and the players' change rooms. As well as the arena slab, which was the energy efficiency. And we had some exit doors as well as entrance doors. So there were a whole bunch of components that were listed in the original ask when we went to council for us to apply to the grant.
So sorry if I may follow up. If, and I'm just, I'm going very if here. So say we take the, the lobby bathrooms there. Would that, do you think affect our, our ability to get this or to use this grant money? Because that was part of it, right? That was part of what we had proposed.
So I think our best thing at this, and I won't be answering the question directly. I think our best thing would be to go back to our granters. And speak to them about how we can work in the parameters of the grant. So how much leeway we have? I don't want to say yes or no, because I, I think that has to come from them.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Wensing, you had a question?
Yes, and can you just remind us what the cost of the slab was? What we had to spend to replace it?
So one of the quotes that came back from Free Con was eight hundred thousand dollars for the arena slab itself. And technically is supposed to include the dashboard as well as the class. But we also don't have the full breakout of exactly what components are included in that. If we do have the breakout for the HVAC, we have the breakout for the electrical, we have the breakout for plumbing. So some of the costs related to the arena slab might be in those. So we rather. I don't, we wouldn't want to award only on the arena slab because we may be short and we might also not be compliant with the grant.
Right. Okay. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you. And can you please share the, the new budget items with us, please?
Definitely. That was passed on to the CEO and I'm certain she will be sharing that with you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. So I will put that motion to the vote. And that is to award the contract at three point five nine, three million. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed to the motion? Okay, motion is defeated. I will read you another motion. I have a motion moved by, and I'll use the same people. Council Madden, seconded by Councilor Manley. The council receives staff report number CS twenty twenty-two zero-one. And that council directs staff to request the engineering firm to split out the Glengarry Sports Palace refurbishment project into phases. And issue a new tender based on the phases. Any discussion on this? Council Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question that occurred to me. If we go and do this, we go and ask for a tender based on phases. I'm gonna presume, but correct me if I'm wrong, we would put in those documents that we will not necessarily be awarding the tenders. It will be based on the available funds. Am I correct in saying that?
I, yes, I believe so. Well, yeah.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, our tender always contains a condition that a tender is only awarded one through council first of all. And it is based on funds.
Okay, Council Manley.
Wondering, do we need something in that resolution as well that talks about reaching out to the province and the federal government regarding, regarding this? Should that be in that, the motion too? Or is that just an assumed?
That's assuming that we're, no, it doesn't need to be, we're gonna, that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, okay.
We'll have to, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you, Anne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on. Okay, moving on to the Treasury Department, we have a temporary borrowing bylaw zero-one dash twenty twenty-two. Motion moved by Council Manley, seconded by Council Wensing, that bylaw zero-one dash twenty twenty-two being a bylaw. To authorize temporary borrowing from time to time during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And that bylaw zero-one, twenty twenty-two be read a first, second, third time and enacted in open council this tenth day of January twenty twenty-two. Welcome, Kim.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. This bylaw is just a standard bylaw. It provides for temporary borrowing by the municipality if required during the twenty twenty-two fiscal year for an amount up to two million dollars. It basically handles any shortfall we might have between when we receive revenues for taxes and expenses. It's, it's kind of a standard thing. We do it every year and it's just a formality, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none? All those in favor? Motion is carried.
Thank you, Council and Mayor.
Okay, moving on to new business abandoned cemeteries. I have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Councilor Massey. The Council of Township of North Glengarry supports Prince Edward County's calls for government action concerning the current legislation and regulations. Surrounding municipal requirement to take over and maintain abandoned operating cemeteries. And that a copy of this resolution be sent to local SDG municipalities, the Minister of Government and Consumer Services, Roma. And the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. Sarah, will you speak to it?
Sure, Mr. Sir. So this is a motion that has been circulating around. And I know for us here at North Glengarry, we do not currently manage any of the, you know, cemeteries that are abandoned. But I know I've had some conversations into twenty-one with a couple of groups that are looking to, you know, give them over to us. And it's a requirement that the municipality does so without any funding. So that's the concern is that this is something that we would have to roll into our tax base. I know when I speak to other clerks, certainly this is something that they have to manage. And then there is also the possibility that of any of the cemeteries that are active also could come our way. Which is even more of an administration, I'll call it a nightmare. So this will be something else that we'll have to consider in two twenty-two. For North Glengarry. And we felt that based on that, that it was certainly something that we wanted to support as far as this motion.
And I'll just say that the United Counties of SDNG supported this motion at the last meeting. So any questions or comments from members of council, Council Manley, then Council Noble?
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea that we should be supporting this motion because we're gonna have, we're gonna have some cemeteries for sure in the, in the near future. That are going to be, I'm, I'm thinking the Gordon Church in St. Elmo for sure. And we're gonna have other ones too, whatever. So definitely, I think I support that, that letter. I'm also wondering, Sarah, if we couldn't add. Notice in the letter, it said Minister of Consumer and Corporate Affairs. Is it the government sending this to or? Yeah, I wonder if that, is that person on the, the list for delegations, Good Roads? And if so, maybe we could get a delegation in to, to that.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, certainly I can check Council Manley. I'm sure that, that they are on the list. And I can add that to our Good Roads requests.
That would be great. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Council. Lee, Council Noble.
I just have a, it's not that long, but I just have a little bit of information. Just something I think about. I don't know if you want to rewrite the resolution, but just things to keep in mind. I'm one of six volunteers that runs the Albin Cemetery. And we take, we took over the Macintosh Cemetery, which was abandoned a while ago. And we take care of it for free. Just to give you an idea, we spend eighteen hundred dollars a year on grass cutting. We sold, we just changed our price, but we sold lots for three hundred. Two hundred and fifty of that three hundred goes into that care and maintenance fund. Mentioned in the resolution. And we sell one lot a year. So fifty dollars, the revenue doesn't exactly pay the eighteen hundred. So that's why some of these, some of these cemeteries are abandoning. Our care maintenance fund has seven thousand. That only goes to the next person that takes over. We don't have access to that money. But most cemeteries don't have a very large amount, again, based on revenue. Majority of local cemeteries are volunteer run. Not all of them, including ours, and many around here are not, are not associated with the church. Which means you don't have that fallback. Most of the volunteers, including our group of seniors. Not all volunteers are connected to the church or the cemetery. So they don't have to stick around and they sometimes don't stick around. I can appreciate the request for money, but what the BAO really needs to do is run, excuse me, find help. To run these sacred spaces as only closed cemeteries should be abandoned. So you shouldn't have that nightmare, Sarah. That's why we were looking at the Macintosh one. They should, you should not be abandoning a, a running cemetery. But every current graveyard committee needs to have its succession plan. And that may not be achievable if the help is not found. And unbeknownst to many people, tombstones are, tombstone maintenance is not the purview of our caretaker or any caretaker. It's up to the family to remember that each marker holds a story. And then the collection of monuments. And that the collection of monuments holds historical significance, as mentioned that that resolution. So your family plot deserves more attention than we can give, whether it's municipality or just a small committee. So that's why I think the ask should not just be for financial aid to help municipalities take over, but the B A O needs to follow up with all registered cemeteries and plot holders and create a care and maintenance plan for the property to ensure their relevance is not forgotten. So it can't just be asking money to pay for the grass cutter. These these places should be taken care of better than getting the grass cut every couple of weeks. So the B A O, the ones who have been, I I get emails from them every week and they stick their nose in every bit of our business, which again is why you're losing some volunteers. But there needs to be a plan because there's just cemeteries aren't going anywhere. People are going to keep going in them, but there won't be people around to run them. So I really think this is a very, it's a very large issue that, yeah, should be brought up at Roma or Good Roads.
So just, I mean, this resolution is not just about money. It's it's about a call for government action concerning the current legislation and regulations surrounding the municipal requirement. So I I think it's a in the original from Prince Edward County, it it outlines all kinds of of these issues. So I I, I mean, unless we need to add something in, Madam C O, do think that we need to put something else in there?
I'm curious where, no, I think I think Brenda, you or Council Noble, you may want to help me write the delegation request for Good Roads for sure. I think the current resolution is probably good. I think there is some legislation that needs to change, which is the sort of the backbone for the issues that you're seeing. And then maybe, you know, when we meet with the minister at Good Roads, we'll have a better indication of if they do have any plans to change anything in the future, based on all the resolutions like this that are going around.
Yeah, glad to know it's not just us. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Noble. Any other further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Okay, so next regular public meeting of council is Monday, January twenty-fourth at seven P M via Zoom. And we will be going into closed session. So unless council, anybody has anything further to state publicly at this point, we will be adjourning this meeting and then heading into closed session. So I'd like to thank all members of council and staff for joining us tonight as well as people watching at home. Asking everyone to please stay safe as our numbers continue to rise and hopefully, we can get back to a normal world again sooner rather than later. So everyone, please take care and we'll see you on the twenty-second of January. Have a great night. Thank you. Good night.